Motion to come out of executive session, please.
Sir moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. If you'll please rise, we have Pastor Jerry Dunn from the Oak Street Baptist Church to lead us in the invocation this morning. Hello Pastor. And then Gary Watson, if you'll lead him to pledge.
Father, as we come before you this morning, we recognize that you are the God of all creation. You are the sustainer of our lives. And you are the one who showers us with blessings to live in such a great nation as this. And Father, we thank you that we are a nation that is still able to pledge our allegiance to the flag of this country and also recognize that we are united under God. Father, we ask your blessing upon our board of supervisors this morning as they hear and act upon every thing that is brought before them. And Father, I pray that you would guide them and guard them as they make decisions that will ultimately affect all of the citizens of Mojave County. Father, we ask you to direct our lives for it is in Christ's name we ask it. Amen.
Amen. If you follow me in the pledge of leading, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, any motion to call for an executive session to be held December 1st, 2014 at 9:00 AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.0383 and 4?
Sir moved.
All in favor?
Second?
Oh, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Number two, are there any committee and/or legislative reports this morning?
Madam Chair, nothing much, but I did attend the BLM Planning 2.0 webinar. If anybody has any questions on what transpired, they can get ahold of me.
Thank you very much. Any others? Number three, do we have a county administrator's report?
Madam Chairman, no report today, thank you.
Okay. And four, motion to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2014 Board Supervisor Meeting?
Sir moved.
All in favor?
Second motion?
Oh gosh, I'm just trying to move along really fast this morning.
Trying to beat a record or something?
We have a motion, second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Call to public, those wishing to address the board that the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on the future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda with the exception of the consent agenda and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. We have one person signed up this morning, and that would be Mr. Mark Shaver. Come on down.
My name is Mark Shaver. I live at 4054 West Hiller Drive, Meadview, Arizona. In regards to Monday's meeting, water meeting, I asked a question regarding the nature of Prop 207 and the relationship to water rights and property rights. At that meeting, the lawyer stated that any comments with that would sound like advice. So that piqued my curiosity, I had to dig a little further. And I went across an article in the Berkeley Law Journal regarding property rights and water rights. And then I asked our state senator Kelly Ward, why isn't this not a part of the conversation? Because now we're asking government to step out because of that Prop 207 which was passed by the voters regarding their property rights. And now we're asking the government to step in and regulate that property right. And that question is, well, what is the very nature of property rights and why isn't this part of the discussion? I understand that water resources are very important to the county, but the unintended consequences of Prop 207 and water rights, well, that's a big issue. I'm not a corporate guy and I don't have corporate clout or money to fight a lawsuit because underneath that very same article, regulatory taking and compensation keeps coming up further and further. Compensation by who? Well, that's coming out of the taxpayer's belt, pocket. So not talking about it does a great disservice to the community. I think that members of this board should take it up with their constituents in their districts about the subject of Prop 207 and water rights and who has control of it. And should we be asking the government to regulate that? Because now we're changing it all over again. That's it.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in our call to public? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I call, close the call to public. This morning, we have two presentations. Our first is a presentation by the Arizona Association of County Officials, and I believe Jen Marson from that organization is here. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you for having us today. My name is Jennifer Marson. I'm the Executive Director at the Arizona Association of Counties. We are going to kind of run through our presentation rather quickly. I'm told you're sort of pressed for time. Please stop me at any time if you have questions, and I will be bringing up Mr. Jim Keeler and Mr. Trey Marson, no, we're not married, Trey Williams, to cover portions of the presentation as well. Okay, so the Arizona Association of Counties, I'm sorry, what we're going to do today, a little review about ACO for those of you who may not be familiar, then a year in review so that you can understand the products and services that we provide to you as members of our association, making sure that we are providing what you want us to provide instead of just what we think you want us to provide. And then looking forward on the horizon, some ideas and suggestions we have for the association moving forward. So ACO was created in 1968. We work with all of the elected positions at the county level. We have 331 members statewide. We have two branches of our association. A 501(c)(6) is the Association of Counties. That (c)(6) allows us to do the lobbying that we do. And then we have the true nonprofit, the 501(c)(3) in the Arizona Foundation. I'm very proud of the fact that most, the average, I should say, amongst nonprofits in terms of how much revenue comes from dues is about 43%. ACO only gains, 29% of its revenue come from dues. We have not increased our dues since 2006. In fact, in 2008, we then lowered them to help counties struggle through the recession. We have not even gone back to that 2006 number. We changed our bylaws a couple of years ago so that if there was going to be a dues increase, we would have to notify counties by December 1st of the year prior to the next fiscal year. And I'm happy to tell you, we will not be asking for a dues increase for fiscal year 16. So happy news to share. We are run by a volunteer board of directors. We have a 30-member board, one representative from every county, one representative from every county elected office, and a five-member officer team elected by the membership at large. Your current officers, Supervisor Johnson is currently our president, Brad Carline is the Navajo County Attorney, he's our first vice president, Manny Ruiz from Santa Cruz County, a supervisor, is our second VP, Chad Roche, third VP from Pinal County, Clerk of the Court, and then Keith Russell is a JP in Maricopa County, he's our past president, he still remains part of the officer chain. I want to tell you that we do have a race for second and third VP moving into calendar year 15. Unfortunately, Mr. Roche was unsuccessful in his bid for reelection, so that's why, while we do have a progressive presidency, that's why we will have a vacancy both in the second and the third VP slot. On the second VP side, the two candidates, we have Verlin Tenell, your Clerk of the Court here in Mojave County, is running against Beth Ford, the Pima County Treasurer. And then for third VP, Paul Peterson, an assessor in Maricopa County, is running against Mary Ellen Dunlap, Clerk of the Court in Cochise County. Just an FYI. I don't know why Supervisor Johnson, there it is. Those are the, you have three votes on our board essentially, because President Johnson is our president, and then Mr. Watson is the newest member of our board as your Mojave County Representative, and then Verlin Tenell is the representative for the Superior Court Clerks. We have a staff of five now. As of October 1st, we recently hired Megan Kintner, and we do have most of the staff with us today, myself, Trey Williams is behind me, seated next to him is Andrew Hartzig, and then next to him is Megan Kintner. Megan and Trey will handle our legislative agenda, both offensive and defensive. Andrew handles policy and research. And if you've ever talked to or called the office, registered for a conference, you've talked to Sue Anderson. She's not here today, she's been with the association about 25 years. So in terms of what we do, in fiscal year 14, we had 28 educational webinars, all of them were for free. Most of them were legislative focused, all of them are archived if you ever wanted to go back and review a webinar that you weren't able to participate in. Six educational workshops, we did three conferences that fiscal year. 21 customized research projects, some of those come at the request of the legislature, some of those come at the request of the county. The example I like to use is Hila County asked us, what are the promotion practices in other counties? How much do you factor in merit versus time in the job versus other factors? So we kind of put that research document together so that when you're looking to make those decisions, you're not reinventing the wheel every time you do that. That's just an example of some of the research that we've done. 29 in-county meetings, we know traveling to Phoenix is not always a joy, and we're happy to come to you anytime you'd like us to. I'm very proud of the next one. I put myself through college as a bartender, so customer service is really important to me. We get about 2,800 to 3,100 requests for service every year. In the three years we've been tracking this data, I'm proud to report that our average fulfillment time remains a day. Now that we have a staff of five instead of a staff of four, maybe next year we'll be even less than a day. In terms of services that we provide, advocacy, while not everything, it's certainly a big part of what we do. We, through our Legislative Policy Committee, took active positions on 114 pieces of legislation that moved through the 2014 legislature. That's not the amount of bills that we monitored, that's just the one we took active positions on. We were able to grow the county's participation in a wide variety of cost-saving programs, whether that's Nationwide's Deferred Compensation Program, Cooperative Purchasing through U.S. Communities, or the Government Employee Marketplace. I'm going to bring up Trey, and he's going to talk about some of our advocacy work in fiscal year 14.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Trey Williams. I'm the Senior Legislative Associate with the Association of Counties. Thank you for having us today. Wanted to briefly give you an overview of the outcomes from ACO's 2014 advocacy program. So you can see there, there's session statistics. This was one of the shorter sessions in recent memory, lasted 101 days. It was very much a problem-solving session. Much of the work of the legislature was focused on the Child Protective Service reforms and trying to address the backlog of cases that were unresolved related to child abuse and neglect. The dominant themes for this session, many of you might have heard of SB 1062, it gained national attention. So exercise of religion was an important theme in the early part of the session. And then once that was resolved, we saw some of the more routine items that the legislature has addressed in previous sessions, such as Common Core, ride-sharing, and taxing solar. I want to draw your attention to the statistics that are at the bottom of this slide. These statistics represent the work of ACO's advocacy program. Typically, our staff consists of anywhere from three to four staff people who lobby the legislature and who track bills. Our team consisted of Jen and I for this legislative session. And so Jen and I tracked 516 bills that addressed issues related to counties. We attended 346 meetings with legislators and staff, so needless to say, we were quite busy. And then we attended 421 stakeholder meetings. And by stakeholder meetings, that means there was a piece of legislation proposed or there was an issue that involved counties, and ACO was invited to the meeting and participated in the meeting. So 421 of those meetings, and then we participated in 112 meetings with the governor or other executive branch leaders. ACO's advocacy program consists of an offensive package, which we call the County Government Platform. It's a compilation of policy priorities that's identified by each county elected office and then is voted on by the ACO Board of Directors. The proposals that are approved by the Board of Directors become the County Government Platform. Every year, we have a number of policy priorities that we advance at the legislature. One of those for this year was protecting or trying to establish the county's share of lottery revenues. Those funds were taken away from counties during the recession, and so for the past two fiscal years, the legislature has decided to appropriate those revenues to the county for a one-time appropriation to the counties. And so we're still working on re-establishing that county's share of lottery revenue. And then of course, preservation of local control is always a big policy priority for us at the legislature. And then we always oppose new state cost shifts to counties and any reductions in county revenue sources. We had eight items in the 2014 County Government Platform. We had a 50% success rate, four were successful, four were unsuccessful. You can see the successful ones there up on your slide. And then at the bottom of the slide there, that contains the unsuccessful items in the County Government Platform. In terms of our defensive success, we had a 100% success rate. And what that means is any bill that was introduced and advanced at the Capitol, ACO was either able to amend or kill. Just to give you an idea of some of our defensive wins, one of them was a bill that would have removed the power of the county school superintendent to set the tax rates for their school districts. The county school superintendent is a countywide elected office. It would have taken that power, that local control that exists with the county school superintendent's office, and would have placed that with the Property Tax Oversight Commission. We were able to successfully amend that bill so that the county school superintendent could retain that power. And then another defensive win for us was we were able to stop a bill that has appeared for the last several sessions that would have taken information that typically appears on the publicity pamphlet and would have put that disclosure on the ballot. Recorders and election officials always like to remind the legislature that ballot space is at a premium. And so the publicity pamphlet is where the information should appear, and the ballot is for making the choice. And so we were successful in stopping that issue from advancing this legislative session as well. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trey. We're going to move on and talk a little bit about the services that are available to counties, and in some cases to county employees, and in some cases to county residents through some of the programs we endorse through the National Association of Counties. I'm going to ask Jim Keeler from Nationwide Retirement Solutions to come up for a moment and talk about his portion.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. My name is Jim Keeler. I'm the State Program Director with Nationwide. We administer your Deferred Compensation Plan, which is your voluntary supplemental pre-tax retirement plan for your county employees. I'm just here today to take a quick statement to thank you for your continued partnership with this plan, which continues to grow. Nationwide being an American company, our mission is to help your employees plan for and live in retirement. We've had a 37-plus-year partnership with NACO. We utilize the NACO Deferred Compensation Plan here with your representatives. John Bennett is the servicing representative that many of you very likely know, and our longstanding relationship with ACO. Currently, as of the end of the third quarter, we have active accounts, 450 participants, and over 12.3 million in assets. So that continues to grow, which means when your employees retire, they can have a successful retirement. So again, my, today I just wanted to really thank you for your continued support and partnership with the plan, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So with the Nationwide Plan through NACO, once the county opts into the plan or any plan enhancements that the board chooses to opt into, then it becomes available to the employees of the county, right? These other programs work the same way, except they're available for county residents. You don't have to work for the county in order to take advantage once the board has made the initial decision to opt into the program. So the first is a dental discount program. It's not insurance, but it's meant to fill the gap if maybe your insurance doesn't go far enough, or maybe you don't have insurance, and it helps buy down the cost of dental care. There are 122 providers in Mojave County that participate in the program. So far, only Navajo County in Arizona has opted in to this program, but if it's something that the board would like to consider, I can certainly get you any information that you would need in order to help you make that decision. The sec, oh, I'm sorry, there are some costs for the individuals and family members to participate. The other program is very similar, except it's healthcare stuff, not dental stuff. Same costs for the families and for the individuals, same idea. The county has to opt in first, and then it becomes available to all of the residents in the county. The next one is my favorite. You guys have been participating since early this year. It's the Prescription Drug Discount Program. I like this program. It's totally free. I use it myself, and I wanted to share some stats with you so that you can share them with your constituents. Since January, and this is through the end of September, just over $3,600 saved by your residents using this program. That's about $14 per prescription, or 22%, and 169 people have used the program from January to September. Pretty good numbers, since this is the first year that you guys have been opted in. If we can help with the marketing in any way to help get the word out to your county residents that this program is available, we gladly do that. All of those products and marketing materials are provided to you guys at free of charge, of course. Cooperative purchasing, Mojave's been a longtime participant with the U.S. Communities Cooperative Purchasing Plan. I just wanted to share your statistics for the first two quarters of 2014. You've purchased just over $88,000 on that contract, which saved the county almost $4,000. If you had gone with a different bidder, you would have paid a little bit more. So I'm pleased, I'm pleased that you guys are using that contract. If we can be helpful in any way, please be sure to let us know. We have a county job board on our website. It's totally free. We don't ask for any money to post. You guys can't post the jobs yourselves, you have to send them to us, and we post on the back end. We've really only been advertising this for about 18 months, but I've heard from several counties that have said, we've received some really good applicants, and they told us that they heard about it through ACO. Because it goes on our job board, our Facebook, our Twitter, and our homepage. So quite a wide reach if you're looking to hire people. If you're politically inclined and you want to subscribe to the Arizona Capital Times, if you do your subscription through us, it's a 50% discount. And this is the once-a-week hard copy edition of the paper and/or access to the online version. They have other products and services. We're working on getting discounts for those, but right now, we have the discount for the Arizona Capital Times. I mentioned we do webinars. We actually just did one on social media. We're working on another one, Social Media 2.0, because that one let us know quite clearly that we need more information out there about social media. We're going to do some budget webinars in January as the session gets rolling. Again, all of them are free for you, for your staff, anyone that you think would benefit from that kind of information, and they're archived so that you can always go back and look at them later. Research services, this is where Andrew comes in. I'm just going to quickly mention that you all, we, we did a survey about a year and a half ago, two years ago, and asked how we were doing, and you guys said, by and large, great, except we really would like you to have a higher focus on research. That's why we created the Policy and Research position. We would like you all to think of Andrew as an extension of your staff. Is that if there is something that you would like to implement in your county, but you don't have the staff to research its feasibility, that's what Andrew should be used for. A perfect example, when we did our Apache County visit, they said, well, we've been thinking for years about having a community college district here in Apache County, but determining all of the steps that would be involved and how, and how long did it take other counties who did that when they did it, we just don't have the time. And Andrew said, well, I can help you with that. So right now, he's in the process of doing that research for Apache County. That's just an example of how we hope we can be helpful for you, so please keep him in mind. We do, every year, two publications, the Salary and Benefit Survey and the Arizona Government Directory. Salary and Benefit is what it sounds like. It's salary and benefit information for county positions as well as city positions, because we co-publish with the League of Cities and Towns. We're gathering the data now, it will be available in January. It just is distributed free to all of you. It's something that we sell to the general public. And it just helps you make those decisions when you're looking to hire, or if someone is coming to you and asking for some kind of salary increase, you can have a baseline of where that position is across the state of Arizona. The Arizona Government Directory is contact information, right? Jim, do you have yours with you? It's just a little like five-and-a-half-by-seven booklet. Again, we distribute that to all of you all for free. It's contact information for all the county and city positions throughout the state. This will come out in February. And then, of course, that's a revenue generator, we sell that as well. Obviously, we provide meeting space if you're in the valley. I'm very excited to talk about the Public Manager Program, and I'm going to go quickly because I know you're pressed for time. We've reinstituted our partnership with ASU and their Certified Public Manager Program. One of the reasons that county participation in that program has dropped in recent years is because the program asks you to come to Phoenix. So in addition to paying the tuition to participate in the program, now, if the county's paying the tuition, the county's also paying the travel costs and the per diem, and then that person is out of the office even longer because there's travel days associated with coming to Phoenix. What we're doing, two things. ASU has agreed that if there's a certain level of interest, I think the floor is going to be 25, the ceiling's going to be 40, of people in an area who are interested in participating, they don't all have to be county people, cities, fire districts, special districts, any of those people who are interested in this kind of professional development, they will bring the program to you, and ACO will pick up the travel costs for the instructors if their instructors need to travel. They also have really upped their quality of online options, so some of their cohorts can even be done online, so then there's no travel involved at all. And in addition, they're creating a sliding tuition scale so that the more people in the area who are interested in participating, the lower the tuition is for everybody. So I'm very excited about that partnership. If you're interested in having that program come to you, let me know. Talk to me, and we'll work out a schedule, we'll get your tuition set in stone, and we'll figure out how we can do the travel. The Government Employee Marketplace, this is basically coupons for you and your families and your employees and their families, just by virtue of the fact that you work for the county. It's on the links section of our website, it's totally free, and there's all kinds of stuff there. You want to buy flowers, get an oil change, buy some tires, diapers, whatever, all kinds of stuff. Arizona Counties Matter. So NACO, the National Association of Counties. I'm a big fan of stealing ideas that are good, so I totally stole their idea. They made this flyer, and on their end, it's called Why Counties Matter. And it's a great infographic flyer because nobody's interested in reading pages and pages of documents these days. It's all about quick consumption of media, right? So they created this flyer, and I totally copied it. I totally flat-out stole it. And this is Arizona Counties Matter. And again, it's not, it doesn't cover everything that counties do, but a lot, criminal justice, elections, transportation, health care. It's a quick way to tell the story of Arizona's counties. We know that a lot of people in our counties think that the services that they receive, they get from the cities or from the state. And we all know that most of the time, they're getting it from the county. So we need to do a better job of telling our county's story. When we first started our county visits in Navajo County this year, I said that same little spiel, and they said, well, can you create one for Navajo County so that it's specific to our county? And I was like, yeah, duh. Why did I not think of that from day one? So Andrew's in the process right now of pulling out all the data, county by county. We're going to get you your own flyer, you can use it however you see fit. I know Navajo's going to put it in their notices of value that go out in early January so that everyone who owns property gets a little snapshot of what counties do. And this takes me right into our next section, which is, everything we've talked about so far are things that we already do. Now I want to talk about things that we don't do, but maybe we should. Oh, I went too far. Association Magazine. We don't really have time to go into the challenges that are facing us in this legislative session. I think you all are hopefully familiar with them, given the deficit that we're facing. That is an opportunity for us to tell our county's story a little bit better, and I think one of the ways that we can do that is to engage our citizens to help us be advocates. Because they are users of our services, and quite frankly, sometimes the legislature is sick of hearing from lobbyists and elected officials. They need to hear from the people who are actually being impacted. Things like the flyer and things like the magazine will help us do that. I want to do the magazine digitally, probably quarterly. I'm not asking for any money from you all, it's not a subscription-type deal. If we make any money, it'll be on ads. And I think because it's digital, so there's no printing costs, we can make them regionally specific so that you're not reading about the same things that Apache and Greenlee County are reading about. Your areas are different. The Summit Awards, we're in the process right now of finalizing who the winners of those are for this year. I think Summit Awards are great because they kill two birds with one stone. They let a county showcase its innovative programs. It's a great PR moment to your constituents to say, we have this great program, and look how great it is, it won an award. And then, just like I stole from NACO, it lets other counties steal that great idea without reinventing the wheel from scratch. So that's really why I like the Summit Awards. They will be awarded at our conference, December 4th and 5th. I hope to see you all there. It's at the Phoenix Convention Center. At this conference, we elect our officers for the next year, as I talked about a little bit, and we set our county government platform for 2015. If you are a member of a county, I don't care whether you're an elected official or not, if you have an issue with a proposal that's before our board, if you're in a county, you're part of ACO, and we would like to hear from you. That's your opportunity to weigh in. I want to continue to expand our professional development. Some of you have jobs that require that you continually have professional development. We should be offering those in conjunction with our conferences, so you're killing two birds with one stone and saving on your travel days. I want ACO to get into the grant business. I'm not a grant writer by training, but I'm learning. It's quite the process, let me tell you. I think there are two ways that grants are helpful.[1730.07] I think there are two ways that grants are helpful. They're helpful for us. They buy down the cost of dues for counties. If we can get some more non-dues revenue into the association, great. Also, I think that we can help be a clearinghouse for you guys for grants. I'm not looking for admin fees for AECO. That's not why I'm going after it. But if we can help find grants for your departments or your offices, then that helps buy down the reliance of those departments on the County General Fund. I say that's a win-win. So I'm looking to get into that business. I want to create a mobile app, both for the Arizona Government Directory and the Salary and Benefit Survey. We used to have one for the directory. It's a long story why we don't. I'd like to get back in that business. And then here's my big idea. I think that education is important. I think that one of the jobs that allows people to stay in a part of Arizona that perhaps they were born in or that they love is working for the county. And I think that we need to create the next generation of people who are passionate about counties. Doesn't necessarily mean county-elected offices, but working for a county. And if we can help those people go to college, I think that's great. So here's what I want to do, create the Next Generation AECO. Again, I totally stole that from NACO, because they have Next Generation NACO. I stole it. It's a good idea. Here's what I want to do. $2,000 scholarships for five students a year for four years of their baccalaureate education. I think that's going to require a $2 million initial endowment, because it's going to be $40,000 out the door every year, once the program's fully up and running. I don't know how long it will take to raise the $2 million. I'm not asking counties to contribute at all to that endowment. We will solicit donations from private donors elsewhere. I picked the number because I went to community college when I started. I was a single mom and I had three jobs. And $2,000 would have been life-changing money for me. And I think that $2,000 for students in rural Arizona is life-changing money for them, too. And I say that's a good thing. I want to do the scholarships regionally, north, southeast, and west, so that your region is competing, your students in your region are competing against one another and not the entire state. I totally think it's doable, and we may be willing to start soliciting for donations as early as February. I'm very excited about the program, and it's one way to help reinvigorate the nonprofit arm of our association. That's all we have for you today. That's how you follow us on Twitter and Facebook. Here's the contact information for the staff that's with you. We always have our cellphones. Please feel free to call or text, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that went quickly. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. And does anybody have any questions? Well, I want to thank you for all you do and all your past accomplishments and your future hopes and dreams, and we're with you. And I want to thank Supervisor Johnson for his service for your association.
Awesome.
And we're here.
Okay.
Thank you.
And don't forget lunch after the meeting.
Yes, and lunch after the meeting. Okay, our next presentation is of the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement, the AEP awarded by National Procurement Institute to Mojave County Procurement Department.
Good morning, Chairman Angus and Supervisors. In 1995, the National Procurement Institute established a program designed to recognize organizational excellence in public procurement. The Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award is earned by those organizations that demonstrate excellence by obtaining a high score based on standardized criteria. The criteria are designed to measure innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership attributes of the procurement function. This program encourages the development of excellence as well as continued organizational improvement to earn the award annually. Mojave County Procurement Department first earned this prestigious award in 2005. Receiving this national award for the 10th consecutive year is welcome acknowledgement and validation by leaders in the procurement profession of our team's efficiency and professionalism as we ensure county taxpayers receive maximum value for each dollar spent. And I'm very proud of the role our team fulfills for Mojave County. We would like to do a Kodak moment, if you wouldn't mind. Just me and the tire board?
I'm just sending the wrong wolf, man.
Enjoy the beach, Chairman.
Ten years, huh?
Where's the break?
Okay, so get up here a little bit.
No, I got the one, but I want to get a little bit closer. I think I don't do this for a living.
Another year, another procurement award. We have a very good procurement department and can't thank them enough. Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda, items 5 to 28, will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion, minus any items pulled for discussion. Do we have any items?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull number 5.
Number 5. Any others? Okay, I need a motion.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda absent number 5.
I'll second that. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number 5. Approve an application for extension of premises patio permit for hooches, 95 Barn Grill, 5575 Highway 95, Fort Mojave, Arizona. The event date is December 6th of 2014.
Madam Chair, the only reason I pulled number 5 was because of potential conflict. I did not want to participate in the vote.
Okay. So I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve item number 5 on the Consent Agenda.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public Hearings. I open the public hearing for discussion of possible action, the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2014-167, approving the Public Participation Plan for the 2015 General Plan Review.
Madam Chairman.
Please.
Director Nick Haunt has a short presentation that may answer some questions, if the board would allow him.
Okay.
How short is his presentation?
I try to be brief. Madam Chairman, Board, thank you very much for your time. And I just tried to go through the facts, and that may answer a lot of questions upfront. And if you have further questions, I have my very talented staff here that we can answer any detailed questions that you may have. So this is, this item is for the Citizen Participation Plan for the General Plan. And the Mojave County General Plan is basically what it is. It's a long-term, comprehensive plan for development for the counties, unincorporated areas. And it includes the Planning Zoning Commission's recommendations to guide the county through county development in accordance with present and future needs. The primary purpose of the plan is to aid the county planning zoning commission and the board in their duties and decision-making. Currently, the county has five elements, six elements, I'm sorry. And the last time the General Plan was reviewed, it was in 2000, and these were the six elements that had to be included by statutes and wanted to include them anyway, natural resources, land use, housing, economic development, public infrastructure, and public facilities. Since we had the census in 2000, Arizona statutes require additional elements. And so these are mandated that we have to include. And these identify sources by aggregates throughout the county, include a comprehensive inventory of open spaces, include policies and implementation for growth areas with mixed uses, and include an environmental planning element to effects of air quality, water quality, and natural resources, and also include a cost for development element to develop strategies to require development to pay its fair share. So these are going to be the new elements, but I want to emphasize that the water resources element, that's already included. We already addressed that in 2000 in the natural resources element. But I think we all recognize that how important it is, and actually, probably the most important part of the General Plan right now. And it needs review, and it will happen. And because the conditions changed, and we received a lot of new information since the 2000 General Plan Review, mainly, we have reports from ADWR, the USGS, on the aquifers and so forth. So I just want to go through really quick the adoption process. And the Arizona Revise Statute defines that the commission, the Planning Zoning Commission, shall formulate the General Plan, and the Board of Supervisors shall adopt and readopt it. And the Board shall adopt it to be an official guide for development in the area. I just wanted to emphasize that again. I want to touch on time limitations. The General Plan has to be, readoption has to be completed in one calendar year. That's in statutes. So we are very early. I want to emphasize that typically, we would start in January with this whole process. We wanted to start very early to set up the procedures and the public participation plan very early, so all the time in 2015 calendar year could be dedicated for public input and amendments and considerations. So also, another time consideration, I wanted to emphasize that the General Plan, the draft before it goes for adoption, it has to be sent out to all interested and affected agencies. And these are typically the adjacent counties, the cities within the county, the tribes, federal agencies, and so forth. So that is slated for July, right in the middle. So the actual review and input period will be limited, probably about six months. And that's the best we can do, because the rest of the year after that, we'll be spent by the Planning Zoning Commission and the Board to finalize the plan and adopt it. So we can meet the deadline by December 2015. So now we're getting to public participation, and that's what's in front of you today, the Public Participation Plan. The Planning Zoning Commission is doing the General Plan as defined by statutes, and we want to dedicate the entire calendar year of 2015. And their goal is to implement a proactive approach, working with community organizations and citizens. Our Department Development Services already established a website, and we can change it, we can add to it. But everything that we do will be posted on the website. Everything will be transparent, any document, any minutes, every email that we receive. And we're going to answer every question and every email, every personal question. People can come in and talk to us in person, of course, but the website is there for assistance. So we are discussing the Public Participation Plan, and the Planning Zoning Commission started working on that, like I said, in September already. And at their October meeting, they approved a committee with five commissioners, one from each district. And those are Keith Walker, Bob Jones, Carol Flusche, Jack Poznel, and Medias Army. So each supervisory district is represented. And that committee will review and discuss the comments that we receive from the public staff, and of course, from the supervisors. They're going to set up working meetings. And this idea came during the commission meeting that have five members, and then they fully realized that having five commissioners in a meeting will actually constitute a quorum. And then, so they will be advertised according to the open meeting laws, regular commission meetings. So I just want to go over how many meetings we're going to have. The committee meetings, approximately, we're planning about six, so we can put it into the first six months of the year and make it productive, basically. Meet regularly about once a month, and then give instructions to staff, and we can draft the amendments. In addition to that, we're planning, and that's in the plan in front of you, meetings in the different areas of the county for different meetings. And then, all the comments and all the workings will go back to the Planning Zoning Commission. And every single regular meeting every month, it's going to be on their agenda in the first six months for discussion. And after that, it will be on the agenda, too, but it will be for more of the approval process. So I counted roughly, it adds up to about 16 meetings for the Planning Zoning Commission. And I just wanted to emphasize that they are all volunteers, and they volunteer their time and tremendous amount of effort to put into this. And we really appreciate their efforts in this regard. In addition, on the October 8 meeting, the Planning Zoning Commission approved some addendums to the Citizen Participation Plan that you have, that people may add their name to the email list, so anybody in the county. So we're going to automatically send out any information to them. And the email list will be available to the public, that they can receive all the public notices through email. In addition, Commissioner Steve Buck asked that we do additional proactive approach to community organizations. And the ones that come to mind right now is the chambers of commerce, the business community, high schools, roller e-clubs. We're going to contact them directly and ask their input. And of course, we can add to this list more. So after we gather all information on these approximately 16 meetings, again, the Planning Zoning Commission will discuss everything at the regular meetings. And hopefully, by July, we can send it out to those agencies that I mentioned. And then, we're going to bring it back to the commission and the board, starting in September, and as many meetings as required. You know, the commission may take a couple of meetings. The board may take a couple of meetings for additional discussions. The goal is to approve the General Plan by the end of the year, to meet the statutory requirement for a major amendment. Now, if it doesn't happen, if the commission or the board needs more time, then the consequence would be that we postpone the project by one year, one calendar year, then it would go in 2016. And that can happen, too. So, for example, if the commission thinks that they don't have enough public meetings or input, then we can add another full year to the process. I'm just saying that that would be the consequence if we don't finish by the end of 2015. And the following slide just shows the timeline that we're proposing right now. And that's all I had. I just wanted to put this out, so hopefully, that will answer a lot of questions. We received a lot of questions about it. Some, you know, people are confused about the time schedule and limitations, and who is actually doing the job. And so I wanted to put this out there upfront. And if you have any questions, I'll be here, and my staff is here. We can answer any detailed questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
When it comes to the General Plan, are we focusing more on water resources or water quality? Because I'm curious as to whether we have the scientific labs necessary to monitor water quality. Water resources, I think, would be an easier to ask.
Thank you very much. It's a very good question. And Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, we have to add an element for water quality. But the water quality element, really, we are not set up. We don't have the resources to test water. We're going to rely on ADEQ. And the plan is, that's what we're going to discuss in the General Plan, that we're going to rely on existing state programs and state laws that regulate ADEQ and regulate the water quality. Now, the water resources is another element, and that was discussed, as you know, here not too long ago in the town hall meeting. And the limitations, how much authority the county have, actually, by state laws, it was discussed here. However, we want to discuss everything here again. And that's already, that was already an existing element in the previous one. But as you know, we received a lot of new information. The federal government, the USGS, did a study, spent over $2 million, and the county contributed about $300,000 to that. That was done in conjunction with... That was done in conjunction with AWR. Now, that's very critical, very important information. Of course, Colorado River, you know, the developing problems there, and areas down in Mojave Valley, you know, running out of water. So, these are going to be very important issues that we want to put in the general plan. What can the county do? And talking with our county attorney's office, even though we don't have, even though the Board doesn't have much authority under state law, but on the other hand, looking out for the well-being of the county, you know, we want to present all the information and want to discuss what can the Board of Supervisors do in that regard.
Madam Chair. I really do like your idea, or the Planning and Zoning Committee's idea to outreach to various civic organizations, specifically the Rotary Club. As a Rotarian myself, I think you're going to find the most involved members of the community. But I don't think it should be limited to just the Rotary Clubs when it comes to civic organizations. You might want to try the Quanians, the Lions, Seroptimists, Elks, Moose, the American Legion, and the VFW. If we set, if it's just an email that we're sending to them, it doesn't hurt to add those people to the mailing. And I think if you do the Rotarians plus those others, you're going to hit ninety percent of the most active people in our communities.
Thank you very much Supervisor Moss for the suggestions, I will do that.
Are there any other questions? Yes. As far as citizen participation, if a citizen attends the meetings, will they be able to address the commissioners personally and get answers questioned at that meeting? Or will they have to fill out a written request to have it considered?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, the commission's idea is that every single meeting, all those sixteen meetings that I mentioned, the citizens will be able to participate, fully participate. The committee meetings will be, it's going to be up to the Chairman of the Commission, you know, how formal they want to do it. But typically, those meetings are pretty informal, and those are working meetings. It's intended to be working meetings, so people can just sit there and work through, and everybody can talk into it. Working meeting, the workshops where, go out to the communities, that's specifically to get input from the committee, and actually, we're going to have all our planners there and work groups, and make sure we get all questions, and everybody's question will be answered. And of course, the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, regular meetings, that's going to be on every single meeting, that they will have to fill out a form, and you know, they can speak to the item and make their opinion.
Okay, thank you, and I'm particularly happy that we're addressing the water issues in our, with our commissioners and in the new regulations.
Thank you very much, and Supervisor Bishop, we're trying to follow your lead after the town hall meeting to address those issues and do the best we can.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one, as far as process, you know, going through and being somewhat new, and I, it seems like you've thought about all of the different angles coming for the citizen participation. I think just the technology, the new technology with the, you're going to have a portal, an internet portal, people will be able to voice their opinions and questions, and reaching out to all the interested parties. But just, I would like to know, I have been told that last time we went through the process, there was a citizens committee, or citizens were on the committee, and what, why did we change it this time? Did it not work? Was it a problem? You know, was it broke? So, personally, I'd like to know the answer to that.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I think the short answer is it didn't work very well. There was a committee set up, and the history is that at that time, the county manager selected the members of that committee, and a good portion of the selected members didn't show up to the meetings. That's how it was started out, you know, they just didn't even come to the meetings. And there were only a handful of committee members that came to the meetings. And there were a lot of, and the information didn't get out probably well enough to the public, so there were complaints that people thought that they couldn't participate, even though it was open to the public, but it wasn't really advertised as an open meeting. This time, you know, it would well be advertised in the major newspapers and everywhere else, and posted as a open meeting.
So, the county manager, he picked the citizens or the planning and zoning?
No, at that time, there was a subcommittee which we called, I think, a technical advisory committee, and the members were picked by the county manager. And they included some commissioners, I think, two or three commissioners. And then, I think only one showed up all the way through, and then he picked also citizens and also people from other cities. And a bunch of those citizens didn't show up. You know, others did show up, and they made comments, and they were active, which was good. And, but at the end, you know, the rules were not clear how this committee should work. And I think that caused some confusion.
You know, this is a different board, we're a five-man board now, and one of the suggestions was that each supervisor could appoint a citizen from their district to be on this, just to open it up and make sure all the voices are heard. And I never see a problem, you know, except in procedure and how it's run, and it sounds like it was more of a administrative problem than just a problem of, you know, having more voices heard. So, I would like to explore the possibility of doing that, if possible, and, all right, just go ahead.
If I may answer that, I discussed this with the commissioners, and most of them didn't like the idea, because what they said was that just appointing an additional member from each district, and you know, that limits to this one person, you know, instead of doing that, you know, there would be a commissioner from each district, and the public will be invited, and anybody can come, you know, it's not going to limit that to one person from each district. So, any person can show up, and we make the meeting as big as need to be. Typically, not too many people show up, that's our experience. But if they show up, you know, that, they're more than welcome to come, and they participate just like anybody else. But the meetings will be conducted by the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because he's going to be on that committee, and it's going to be an open Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and will be advertised as such. But anybody will be invited.
Okay, everyone's invited, but is it, you said it was an informal work session?
It's a work.
But is it still, you sign up, and you have only three minutes to speak, and that's it, or is it more of a given take? Can the commissioners answer back?
Yeah, and I don't want to speak for the Chairman of the Commission, but in the past, we never had this three-minute rule. And right now, we have a very good example, that we are doing its working very successfully, and you're going to see that pretty soon. We work in, on the zoning ordinance, the county zoning ordinance. And we are basically rewriting the county zoning ordinance. And the whole purpose of it is, it's old, we try to make it more straightforward, useful, and simplify, and bring it up to the current standard. And so, the citizens are invited there. We advertise it, we advertise it on our webpage right now. It doesn't have to be, because we don't have five commissioners, we have four commissioners there. And it's very informal. People show up there, they can speak as much as they want, they can put their input in, in writing. We even help them to write their input if they need to. So, that works really good, and I think that's the example that the commission was considering, that they want to continue. But I can't speak for them, really, it's going to, they're going to be making the rules.
Anybody else have anything?
Madam Chair, if I could, I wanted to follow up on a comment that was made, with your permission.
Yes, please.
The citizens committee aspect, the need for it, I've been thinking about this. I mean, individuals, let's say Mr. Shaver, others have been talking to me about it. And something that occurred to me when it came up is, I would just simply appoint one of my two people from the Planning and Zoning Committee. That's the reason I appointed them, they're the two that I trust the most to pay attention to these details. So, if we did a five-member citizens technical committee, I'd find Medea's Army and say, "You're on it, you're it." So, I really don't see the point, because we, I think we as a Board appointed the two best people we knew of to that role already, if that makes, if that's clear enough.
Well, I just never see a problem with having more voices, and you know, I'm not going to, but I appreciate what you're saying.
No, and I understand your point, and I think the plan that's been come up is a deviation from the past, but it's a positive deviation in that with these six meetings that the committee is setting up, there's essentially five plus anyone in the county who wants to participate. That's who, I'll call the committee workshops. There could be a thousand people in this room, I'm going through the plan with them, if that's what people wanted. If Mr. Shaver wanted to participate, he could do that. He could show up and speak as much as he liked.
I do think the difference this time is the technology of it. We will be able to get information out, we're going to actively go out and let the organizations and interested parties, the business communities. I think also, there was a sense in the past that we were not welcoming different viewpoints, but that's different. And I think we've, this Board has gone a long way to show that we are a different Board, and that we are more open, and I think it will be different because of that. So, I'm open to this new way of doing it. If it didn't work very well last time, I'm not for redoing if it didn't work, but I want to be assured that people will have their voices heard and have that opportunity at these meetings.
Madam Chairman, if I may, thank you very much for your comments, and that's exactly the intent. And again, I can speak for the Chairman of the Commission, but I can tell you that it's working very, very successfully for the zoning ordinance review committee. And Supervisor Moss brought up Mark Shaver, who came many times, and thank you very much. And he made really good comments, and his comments were considered and included in the zoning ordinance, and I foresee a very similar process. And if I may say anything, I want to invite more people, I want to invite everybody. In fact, our problem is that we don't have enough interest in this, not that we have too many.
Well, I hope we have more interest this time around, and I think we will. Some of the issues are more being discussed publicly, and I do think if people believe that they will be heard, they will show up.
And Madam Chair, I want to applaud Mr. Hunt. I mean, not just posting in the newspaper and putting something up on our website and putting a staple up on a wall at the courthouse. If they follow through, and I know they will, they're going to be actually reaching out to at least ten civic organizations throughout the county, which should probably have more than 2,000 members all total. And these are the guys who do, in my opinion, ninety percent, and ladies, who do ninety percent of the work. So, I think you will generate citizen participation, and if they don't participate, that's because they choose not to, not because they didn't know about it.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hunt?
I have a question, more. Nick, I've been through quite a few of these, and so have you. The citizen participation has been pretty much nil in all these, hasn't it? Even, I think what he's getting at is, they've appointed people, like the last time, the manager picked his people, who were a mixture of Rotarians and all those people from civic organizations, and the people don't show. They just don't show for this. The only people that show are the people that have a personal interest in basically one issue. So, I think even with, you know, putting out the more information you're going to get out, I think you're still going to have a small participation, especially from the cities. I mean, they don't really, they have limited interest in what goes on in the county, so that's the problem.
Okay, and with that, I do have Mr. Shaver signed up to speak. Do you still want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, come on down. Thank you very much. Oops.
Supervisor Johnson is absolutely correct when he says that people don't actually take the time to participate in the process. It's a sad thing. But unfortunately, that burden falls on the shoulders of our supervisors that we have elected to reach out to the public and speak on these issues. You could hold, by controlling the information, you control the conversation. And I noticed that a lot of you have found that out to be true, because your participation on social media reflects that. And I understand it, I see it, and it's hard to get people interested unless they're, it affects them personally on some level. The level that Mr. Hunt is speaking of, of this subcommittee being totally controlled by the Planning and Zoning Commission, can be best reflected by the previous process that the county manager at that time, Mr. Walker, did. And people don't understand, that was outlined in a minority report done by Mr. Abbott and members of that commission at that time, that it was rewritten, and it was done without actually having people involved, because it was so unwelcoming. He controlled that information, and he controlled the conversation, which led to the current situation out there at Red Lake and Golden Valley, those changes and those policies. Now, we're here with the same idea again of just appointing the same, well, I can't say the same people, but there are members who were part of that subcommittee are now in charge of the process again, that created this situation out in Red Lake and Golden Valley. Your only perspective you're getting from these people are the perspective from a developer's point of view, whose ideas are to either comply with the regulations or change those regulations, so that developments can go ahead. That's one perspective. Now, earlier today, I mentioned, well, Prop 207, that's a bad, that's a big land issue. Property rights that are not being discussed, that should be discussed, because according to the research, even though we take someone's property, or the government takes someone's property away for, you know, community use or public use, they're not actually paying for the compensation of that. Now, we have a multimillion-dollar operation going on there, someone's going to get paid, and it's going to come out of the taxpayer's pocket. But now, you're excluding people out of the process, because the best way to describe it is the way Mr. Watson described it, when he wants to have the county have a seat at the table of discussion where decisions are made. That is a big difference between actually sitting on the outskirts, looking in, from a spectator point of view. He wants, the county wants to be a player in that decision, so should the people.
Thank you. Do you like to say something?
I want to thank Mr. Shaver for his comments. He has been a frequent Facebook messenger to me on these issues, and I have considered many of the things he's had to say. I do think this difference, this issue is a lot different from the Planet Ranch situation, primarily because we're spending a year telling everyone what we're doing and publishing it, courtesy the county never had. And I'm not certain, Mr. Schaefer, I probably shouldn't have let you go back, because I have a question. Is your concern with the citizens technical committee that occurred last year, or last go-round, is your concern based upon the participation of that committee, or the fact that that committee's recommendations were allegedly changed?
I like to say all the above, because one thing led to the other, and it plays off one another. I mean, it's hard to just focus on one part of that issue when the plan encompass everything for the county. One thing that really highlighted, stood out in my mind, is that when the county manager at that time sees control of the process without going through the process, worries me a lot. And that's where we, you too, that any one person can have that much control that sidestepped the process, your process of, you know, excluding the public from these meetings. In other words, I asked my supervisor, her staff, where was the public meeting in which that Board at that time gave the county manager... that board at that time gave the county manager the authority to sidestep the process to exclude the public from the table?
Now, we're talking about the 2005, 2009-
2010.
-to 2010 process.
Now, we're having that same situation arise now.
How?
I understand that you guys have done a marvelous job of trying to be inclusive with the public. I get it, I totally get it. But I also get why Mr. Watson wants to have a chair at the table of discussion where decisions are being made.
But I don't understand, because the county manager isn't appointing these people.
No.
The county manager is not, has no authority to change any plan.
No.
That's all been changed. Yeah, we've changed that.
Now, we have the entire planning zoning, who just appointed themselves to be, you know, wisdom of conventional thinking.
Well, in reality, I and the other board members have appointed them, not, they haven't appointed themselves.
Well, I was at that meeting. I heard it, both themselves in.
They made that recommendation to us, okay, so.
You guys have that meeting where you accepted that their-
I think we're doing that now, are we not? Mr. Hendricks wants to say something.
Madam Chairman and Supervisor Moss, if my memory serves me, not that I was really a part of the process, but back when, just to set the record straight, and I can bring this information back in front of the board, I believe the Ron Walker, the county manager at that time that Mr. Shaver's discussing, brought before the board a public participation plan that included him having the authority to appoint a Citizens Advisory Committee, attack committee. I, I believe, my memory tells me that that actually occurred. So the other thing that I'd like to state, that Director Hunt stated very explicitly is, in statute, the authority is, the commission makes recommendation on general plan, shall make recommendation. How they do that, they can establish their advisory committees or whatever else. The important thing that Director Hunt brought up is that it's his intent, and I believe it's the commission's intent to greatly expand that public participation plan, make sure it's advertised, make sure we invite that participation, and address any concerns that the people have. Secondly, Nick Hunt says the board shall take the commission's recommendation, make decisions on developing the general plan, which basically is a development guideline for the county. And so those are the two authorities, the commission and the Board of Supervisors. Obviously, the board is hearing the public participation plan, and you can insert your criteria for that plan. Thanks.
And I think, Madam Chairman, along with Supervisor Moss, the plan before had citizen participation. It came back before the board. Now, people can argue that maybe their opinions didn't get voted on, much like people will argue this time, that the majority of the board didn't represent theirs, but there's always, by statute, there is public participation in all these.
Yes, Madam Chairman.
I guess my other point would be the quality of participation would probably be a better thing to do. I would be more unhappy if you guys were open up these workshops for interested parties when different sections of the general plan are up for discussion at those, at those meetings. You know, I'd be more unhappy, but to exclude them from the workshop part, where those decisions, decisions are being formulated and then presented at the public meetings? Someone were to have an issue at, say, for example, Natural Resource was one of the first meetings that were being discussed at the workshop, just for the commissions to discuss. And then those options, and I guess there are other scenarios along with that, were to be presented at the public?
Excuse me, I think we need to clarify. Aren't all meetings open? There's, none of them are closed.
Well, that's not what I understood from Mr. Hunt, was that workshops weren't-
I understood from Mr. Hunt that public participation was allowed at all these meetings.
At all meetings.
And unrestricted participation.
If I may say that, Madam Chairman, all meetings will be open to the public, and Mark is personally invited to every one of them, and I invite you to see me before or after the meeting, anything, make sure, but it will be very similar where you came to a few of those meetings on the zoning ordinance review, and, you know, there will be no limitation on, on input. In fact, we're looking for input, and we appreciate it.
You know, I can't go back and change what happened in the past. None of us can.
No, but we can.
But we're different, we're a different board, and I know my door is open, and I know all the other supervisors' doors are open, and if there's a problem, if you think you're not being heard, or if anyone thinks you're not being heard, or their, their ideas and opinions aren't, aren't being, are being minimized, I'm sure any one of us will be happy to intervene on your part and do what we can do. So I, I think that we need to give this a chance, and it's going to be a different process, and I think it's going to be open and better.
I agree with you, and I hope that each and every one of my supervisors up there today would do some sort of public outreach themselves in each of the districts, as well as the county itself. Let's hear you.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is the hearing closed? If so, I'll make a motion.
Oh, yes. Anyone else want to speak about the general plan, public participation? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Were there any letters written or anything? That was all we had, it was one person that spoke, and no letters were on this?
I got some phone calls, some informal phone calls from people who wanted, who wanted more, but we're happy with some of the new ideas, the website portal, and are actually excited about what's going to happen this year, or next year, as the case may be.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2014-167, approving the public participation plan for the 2015 general plan review.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Opening the public hearing for item 32, Discussion and Possible Action: Consider Adjusting the Fee Schedule for the Mojave County Parks. Oh, is there anyone who wants to speak to this? You want to come up, Mr. Watoski? Is there any questions that we have?
Yeah, I have no questions, unless I just, and I really don't want to hear Steve talk, but.
No, no. I just have a question. Okay. The, the schedule for the River Regatta in Bullhead City, I had a lot of anger at the last regatta about the $40 per person charge for, for cars going in. It was $40 per person. So if you had a car, you know, they ask for a lot of people, people hook up together to float, and you had 10, 12 people, you know, in minivans, do the math, that's a lot of money. People were very, very angry, and of course, the city blamed it on the county. So it came to me, and I, I didn't realize it was per person. So when I was reading this schedule, it said $40, but it didn't say per person. So which one is it this year?
Madam Chair, members of the board, with regard to the Bullhead Regatta, the county, county's revenue sharing solution that was approved by the board, allocated a fee, a per-person fee of $20 if participants arrived on Saturday. That afforded persons to have free access to overnight camping on Saturday night, as well as come back on Sunday. There was a $40 per person charge, provided that the participants wished to come into Davis Camp previous to Saturday. So with regard to Saturday, it was $20, and the county provided $7.50 per person to Bullhead City as part of the revenue sharing agreement.
Right, so it's, okay, so you're saying it's still $20 per person-
That is true.
-coming in. Either we didn't, we or the city of Bullhead didn't promote that enough or advertise that enough, because people were just furious. And, and, you know, just as someone who lives there, and it's a park, and if you, parking is tight anyway, I, I would really like to kind of revisit that and, and talk to Bullhead City before we go ahead and approve it, just so we're all on the same page on this, because I was getting phone calls at night, you know, there was a lot of confusion, and we got a lot of blame for that, and I don't think people realize that. Bullhead City got money from that, too. So I just want everything to be open this year. I think that there was some miscommunication, we'll put it that way, last year.
And if I could, I would reinforce that point. I think I received more phone calls in those two days from my residents than, I mean, it was going off the hook, because they thought the county and the city were finan, and I sort of agree with them now that I know it's $40 per person, was financially taking advantage of the city. We were in usury territory at that point.
Absolutely.
I think, Madam Chair, I think the problem's coming from, we need to reevaluate the whole thing and look at the money, because I think people are trying to beat the system by thinking, well, we won't pay the city their wristband charge, we'll just go to the park, and so it, and I think this covers it, like you said, with the $7.50 we have to give back to the, to the city. So either the city takes over the entire park, which is going to be problematic, or we have some other situation where we account for the money easier.
Well, I can give an example of one of the many things. The Aquarius Hotel and Casino has guests who buy wristbands, and they were going to arrange for their guests to get there, and all of a sudden, they found out that their guests are being charged $40 per person, even though they have, no one's cheating the system, no one's gaining the system. And a lot of these guests were actually residents, because they didn't want to drive home drunk after the event. And it was, it was not a good thing, because we got in the way, in my opinion, of people having a good time and everyone making some money. We shot ourselves in the foot, we shot our reputation in the foot.
I, I agree with that. It could have been done better, and I want it to be done better this year. So I'm not really sure if we could take that part of it out.
Madam Chairman, I, and I got the phone calls, except they were from you all, so. So I can certainly sympathize in, in the amount of confusion that there was. I believe one of the, one of the issue, main issues was that the people from the Aquarius were wanting to come over a day early and stage their equipment and being charged the full price. And one of the things that Public Works did was to offer to work with the cities to not charge those individuals, and just ask the city to identify which individuals they wanted us not to charge. And so we did, we did put up the effort. If I was going to make a suggestion to allow Public Works to bring something back to the board, I'd suggest that, one, we clearly define the issue, so that you can address it, and is that something that Public Works could possibly do, Steve, is to, is to meet with, work with the supervisors and clearly define the issues, and maybe even call the Aquarius, and to see if there's some consideration, like what we did, but official consideration for the charging on that staging day.
Madam Chairman and County Administrator Hendricks, one thing I should make clear is that there was no charge by Mojave County Parks at Davis Camp for participants that entered the park through other means, such as the Bullhead City shuttle, or through drop-offs. It was only if participants wished to park their own personal vehicle. So with regard to the Aquarius and other support staff, we did not make any additional charge above the-
Well, see, then, then it was miscommunication, because that bus came, and they charged them, and they said it was the county that was insisting on it. So what I'm saying is, no matter what, it doesn't matter, because right now, we're just talking about the cars. We just have to make it clear and make sure that Bullhead, and I will make sure Bullhead City puts it on all their literature, so everyone understands how much it's going to cost to come in and park at Davis Camp that day.
And, and Madam Chairman, would the board be willing to approve the other fees that have been proposed today, and then have us bring back those regatta fees at a later date?
Aren't we, are we approving the fees today? Are we setting this for-
I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct.
Right.
And I think that's more of a contract negotiation than we do it. We can go ahead and do what we're doing.
I do have another issue about the fee schedule. Madam Chair, if I could.
Sure.
Something else that comes up every year, I know because my kids used to participate in it, is the Kiwanian Easter egg hunt that's held at Davis Camp. And I believe it is in the vicinity of the Ramada. Would they be included in that $130 charge when it comes for them putting on an hour-long event where the kids pick up Easter eggs and everybody leaves? It's been going on for many years, is my understanding down there.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, Parks does not propose any revisions to the Davis Camp fee schedule for a group, group area rental, but the, the rates are set forward such that for a type of event that clearly is just a private event, even though it's supported by a nonprofit organization, where they're not selling tickets to the public, would not be subject to any additional fees that other organizations that are selling up, are putting on a public event would be subject to.
I see there's two fees here. One is a non-fee event, it's $130 a day, and the other is a fee-based event, which is $260 a day.
Correct, so it would refer to-
So if I'm the Kiwanian Club, and I want to do my hour-long Easter egg hunt, that's become a tradition in the Bullhead City area, I'm going to be paying you $130 for the privilege of planting Easter eggs in the park.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, yes, the, in, in some instances, most instances, the non-fee rate would apply, the lesser fee. But there is, you know, certain discussions that are, that are entered into with regard to the nature of the specific event.
I'll say I have a problem with that.
Okay. So is there an action for the item 32?
What is it that the administration is specifically looking for, Mr. Hendricks, on this item?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, I guess bifurcation, so that we could bring back the regatta separately, so that that would be a separate discussion on, on how that would be handled. That's what we would be looking for.
Okay. And did I close the public hearing for this? Well, I just did.
Okay. So are you looking for us to actually approve these fees right now?
So you're sitting in your hearing, right?
Yes.
You could approve the hearing date.
We, and I, I just asked Attorney Ekstrom, he said we could approve the hearing date.
For those items.
So, and how long would that be, 60 days out?
I believe it's 30 days.
30 days out?
This is the hearing.
30 days.
I'm going to make a motion, and I'm going to request that this be rebrought for a hearing date at least 30 days or more out. In the same time, I'm going to request that administration bifurcate the regatta issues, they can engage in discussion with the pertinent interested persons and entities, and I'm going to request that the administration put their thinking caps on when it comes to the short-term events, which occur periodically for the benefit of the public on a non-fee basis, such as the Kiwanian Easter egg hunt and other similar events.
Okay. And, you know, while we have ACO here, maybe they can give us a little insight into how other counties handle those kind of things, too. Okay? All right. So, did you get all that? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion, and part of the discussion would be, obviously, need you to bring back, because our parks are self-sufficient, so any giving away of money or funds from the park, we need to have those brought back to us, to the impact it'll have to our park system, so we have that.
Right. Okay. So you, that was a second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to the regular agenda, number 33, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Continued Employment by the Board of Supervisors of Mike Hendricks as Mojave County Administrator. This was continued from our November 3rd meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this to our next meeting, and that we instruct County Administrator Hendricks to attach multiple alternative contracts for our consideration and potential approval.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 34, Discussion and Possible Action Reviewing Consideration of Possible Settlement Options in Regards of Mojave County's Objections to Freeport Mineral Corporation's Applications to Severance Transfer Certain Water Rights Appertainant to Land Located Within Planet Ranch and Lincoln Ranch Along the Bill Williams River. I want you to hand the motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Could I have Nick Hunt? It's in the-
If you give us a little more minutes, we get the-
Okay, you need to take care of it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Could I have Nick Hunt attend this meeting?
Sure.